Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're good.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, this is the meeting for the Mobile City Planning Commission for Thursday, October 7th, 2021. General procedures for this remote meeting are as follows. I will announce an application for items where no one from the public is attending via Zoom. Staff will give an overview of the application, including comments received from the public. If a member of the public will attend the meeting, staff will announce their attendance and admit them at this time. Once the parties have joined the meeting, if needed, I will state the commission's rules regarding the number of speakers as well as speaking time. Each application is limited to a maximum of four speakers in support and four people in opposition, limited to five minutes each. I will then announce the beginning of the public hearing. The applicant will present their case and up to three additional speakers if applicable. For each speaker, at the end of their presentation, I'll ask if there are any questions from any commission members. Once the commission concludes their questions of the speakers in support of an application, I will then call for interested parties to speak. At the end of each speaker's presentation, I will again ask if there are any questions from the commission. The applicant will be given an opportunity to rebut in accordance with commission rules, two minutes of rebuttal. After the rebuttal, I will declare the public hearing closed and the commission will go into a deliberation session. After the commission has rendered a decision, the applicant and concerned parties will leave the meeting or will be sent back to the waiting room by staff where they can then disconnect. I will then call the next agenda item. Commission members and staff, please remember to keep your microphone on mute unless you are speaking to the meeting attendees. We'll now do the roll call, myself, Jay Stubbs, present, Mr. Alan Cameron, Ms. Jennifer Denson.
Present.
Ms. Shirley Sessions. Mr. Taylor Atchison. Mr. Matt Anderson. Mr. Nick Amberger.
Here.
Ms. Bess Rich.
Here.
Ms. Susan Carley.
Here.
Mr. Kirk Matei.
Here.
We have a quorum. I'll now call for a motion of the adoption of the agenda.
May I approve the adoption of the agenda?
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion of the agenda today? All in favor of the adoption of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll now move into the agenda of items. We'll start with our holdovers. There is one agenda item. Number one, 2662 Phil and Jim Street. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, two things. One, I just admitted Mr. Matt Anderson into the meeting. Two, I am-
Sorry, I'm tardy.
Secondly, I have admitted Ms. Doris Bettis into the meeting. She is currently connecting to audio. I will go ahead and give a little bit of an overview. This application was held over from the commission's earlier meeting in September because it requires a parking variance. At the Board of zoning adjustment earlier this week, the applicant indicated that they were going to revise their proposed building to make it smaller and increase the amount of parking provided in hopes of providing compliant parking. Because that will take a little while, we would suggest to the commission that they hold it over until the December 6th meeting. And Ms. Bettis is still connecting to audio.
That was held over to the December 6th board's meeting, so the planning commission may want to hold it over until the 16th, perhaps.
May I ask a question to confirm? This is Jennifer. So what you're saying is Board of Adjustment, they met and they had a discussion. She's changing it? And we're still waiting to see what the Board of Adjustment does?
That's correct. The change was not ready for the Board of Adjustment's meeting earlier this week. And she is now pursuing revised plans.
Okay.
And so pursuing, and Ms. Bettis is on the line now. She is hoping to provide compliant parking, if not compliant, less of a variance request. But again, so that the board can hear that application if necessary. The staff is recommending that the planning approval be held over to the December 16th meeting. Planning approval will still be required because the property is owned R1 and it's a church in an R1 district. Ms. Bettis, can you hear us? Doris Bettis, can you hear us?
Margaret, just to let you know, we have this problem for the Board of Adjustment meeting where she did not have audio set up on her iPhone, so she had to call in. So this may be what has to happen again.
Okay. Bert, can you work to facilitate that and we will come back to this application?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing that. We will move on and come back to item number one, which is a holdover of 2662 Phil and Jim Street. Moving on to new subdivision applications, of which there are six. The number two on the agenda item, 690 Ziegler Circle East. It's recommended for tentative approval. Is the applicant in attendance?
I am. I am admitting Chris Lee, Robert McCollum, and Justin Palmer into the meeting. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes.
Thank you. Robert and Justin appear to still be connecting.
Chris, do we need to wait on those two fellows?
Um, they should be able to come in. Justin is the one that actually did the survey and then Robert's the owner.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one admitted into the meeting in opposition.
Mr. Lee, are you and Mr. McCollum and Mr. Palmer in agreement with the staff recommendations?
Yeah, so I'm reading that the staff recommendation is tentative approval based upon the items listed below. If that is the case, then yes.
So there are eight numbered items listed below in the agenda. You guys are good with all of those. If you're in a room, it's kind of echoey. If you can get closer to the microphone so we can hear you a little bit better.
Mr. Chairman, we have no one-
Y'all have the live stream.
In opposition.
Yeah, there is a live stream on for you guys. Mute that. So again, I'll reiterate, there are eight points of conditions under the tentative approval. Mr. Lee, Mr. McCollum, Mr. Palmer, are you guys good with those? Any questions for staff?
Robert, do you want to answer that?
I'm sorry, are there any questions? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, there are-
Yeah, are there any questions for-
For you guys, are there any questions under the tentative approval for your conditions below? There are eight listed.
I don't know of anything.
Staff, is there anything on here that you have specific, want to make mention to them regarding this application?
No, sir.
And there's no one in opposition for this application?
That is correct.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The application is approved. Item number three on the agenda, 1805 Government Street. It is recommended by staff for tentative approval, subject to conditions. Ms. Papas is the applicant with us?
Yes, sir. I've admitted Ms. Patsy Alexander into the meeting. Ms. Alexander, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Hi.
Ms. Alexander, this agenda item has been recommended for tentative approval, subject to the conditions for your application, of which there are seven listed. Do you have any questions regarding those conditions?
Can I say my mic screen? Could you read them to me?
That's quite extensive.
You guys have a schedule, right?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
All right.
I'll defer to staff.
It's different from the one we had in 2018, June 25th, 2018. We had a, I have it here. Oh, it's the last, it's the only seven, so that's better. Sure, yes. The last time it was nine.
Good.
Ms. Papas or staff, is there anything under this agenda item that you would have cause for concern and want to bring to Ms. Alexander's attention?
I'm reading over them now, and no, sir, nothing stands out. Mostly it's notations and minimum setback along Government Street. There's no dedication or anything of that nature that frequently causes issues.
Is there anyone in the waiting room or on this Zoom call in opposition to number three on the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing no further comments from Ms. Alexander on the conditions, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, Ms. Alexander.
Thank you. I've got a copy of this in the mail, right? Or should I come and pick up one?
It will be mailed to you.
I thank you, Ms. Papas. Good to see you.
Thanks.
For the long time.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Moving on the agenda, number four. Southwest corner of McVeigh Drive and Bowling Brothers Boulevard. The plat meets minimum requirements and staff recommends tentative approval, subject to conditions, of which there are eight conditions listed. Is applicant present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just admitted Jerry Byrd into the meeting. I've also admitted Mrs. Sessions into the meeting.
Sessions, Mr. Byrd, are you in agreement with the conditions subject to tentative approval?
Jerry Byrd is, yes.
And I'm a commissioner, so I'm sorry. I was late getting in. No one would let me in. I've been trying to get in for 20 minutes.
Sorry.
Okay.
I'll take that. You don't have any questions?
I do not. Thank you very much.
Thank you for joining us. Is there anybody here in opposition, Ms. Papas?
No, sir.
Recommended for tentative approval, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject to staff recommendations.
Okay.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The application is approved. Thank you, Ms. Sessions and Mr. Byrd.
Mr. Byrd, I'm going to keep you on mute since you're down and a few more items. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to be, I'm sorry, you need to call the next application.
Item number five on the agenda, 130 Myrtlewood Lane. The staff recommendation is for tentative approval, subject to conditions, of which there are 11 listed. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, I have admitted Brett Orell into the meeting. The applicant was in the waiting room. I'm looking for him, and then I'm also admitting people that would like to speak in opposition.
Reminder that we're limited to four speakers for an application and four speakers in opposition. Myrtlewood Lane. If you're-
I don't think you have the right application up on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm admitting-
That's okay.
Here we go.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, finally announced. Anyone who has on the live stream, turn it off now, please. Was in the waiting room. I'm looking for- Okay. It's their turn to speak. I will unmute them.
Yeah, a reminder that if you have the live stream, it is delayed. And if you are speaking for or against a application, that that live stream needs to be turned off or muted so it doesn't interfere with our live session. Is the applicant or Mr. Applicant present yet, or Mr. Orell?
Yeah, I'm here. Brett, yes, Brett Orell with Poly Surveying. I'm on the call. And if it's okay, I can go ahead and kind of go ahead and start presenting and let you ask any questions you may have.
Dean Parker, who is the applicant, is also being admitted into the meeting now.
All right. Yes.
All right, so, yeah, so I'll jump right in. So we have a piece of property at the corner of Myrtlewood and Battery Lane. We, my client has purchased this property, Mr. Parker, and we have submitted a three lot subdivision. Three lot subdivision on this piece. We have seen a lot of correspondence that the staff provided us and we have reviewed yesterday afternoon. Seems that most of the concerns were very typical of any subdivision. Safety, maybe size, configuration. At times, it was mentioned drainage as well. So one thing I would like to point out is that the, due to the size and configuration of this property, we meet all the criteria of the current regulations in terms of square footage, size, length to width, setbacks, et cetera. We are required to provide dedication along Myrtlewood Lane that would be 25 feet from the existing center line. That is noted, and our setbacks are based from that new property line that will be established through subdivision. So there is some confusion in that. I've read some correspondence where 15 foot was thrown out in some places. What it is, it's 25 feet from the center line will be the new property line. And then from there, the setback shown, whether there are front setback at 25 feet or a side street setback at 20, which is very typical, is what we have prepared. I would like to note that less than, you know, eight months to a year ago, just south of this property, maybe four to five lots down, a similar configuration was approved in which a side street setback was allowed at 20 feet, which is very normal in the city of Mobile. So we're not asking for anything out of the norm with this application. The other thing, we did have an opportunity to meet with the with the city engineer. Mr. Parker was able to meet with him. They walked the site. We got some feedback from him and trying to be proactive about handling the drainage. And have consulted with Bethel Engineering as well privately to handle any future drainage with this. Any home that is built at this location is subject to land disturbance permitting, which is then prepared by a civil engineer privately, then reviewed by the city engineering department and goes through that permitting process. So in terms of drainage, it will have to be taken place at the time of those permits. And we believe we've set up adequate drainage easements and addressed where the drainage infrastructure is located so that we can accomplish that. The last item that I kept seeing was safety. And there is one item that I do want to ask the commission to potentially amend is item number eight. It states that Lot 1 would be denied access to Battery Lane. What I would ask that, that instead of that be denied, we had a similar application about a year ago off Ridge Lawn where it was close to an intersection. That was actually to Old Shell Road. And we came up with some creative language to state that the driveway be placed as close to, and in this case, Lot 2, as possible with approval by traffic. And that was something we did in that particular application. So I would ask that that be considered as well. Instead of denying access to Battery Lane from Lot 1, that we come up with some type of note there to allow it to be placed as close to Lot 2 as possible. Other than that, I'm in agreement with all of the the items, just with an amendment to number eight. And I just wanted to give that overview because I know there is quite a bit of opposition. I think a petition signed and also just trying to give a little clarification as to how we got here.
Thank you, Mr. Orell. You were speaking on behalf of the applicant. Are there any, are there any questions for the, from the commissioners?
Mr. Chairman-
I have a question. May I ask a question? You had mentioned another site recently that was approved for subdivision. Can you show us on the, the map where that was?
Can you see the arrow?
Mm-hmm.
Right there.
And was that about the same size lot that was divided?
Same. It's just two houses. So one house, one or two.
Ms. Mike John, I'm going to mute you. Okay. That one there. One lot is 8759, 8759 square feet. The other lot is 10,800 square feet.
So yes, they're the same size. We have 10,000 and change, 9,000 and change, and 9,000.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Dean Parker, who's the applicant, has been admitted into the meeting.
All right, Mr. Parker, your name and address for the record.
Yes, sir. My name is Dean Parker and my address is 2516 Collinades Drive, West Mobile, Alabama, 36695, Mr. Chairman.
You have any comments for your application?
Only thing I'd say is we spent a lot of time with my team making sure that we were following what was already established by the planning commission. We believe that this lot is sitting close to St. Paul's and other school districts that we would like to be able to help the young families be able to enjoy the rich heritage that has been set in the Spring Hill area so that is part of my driver to help these families. The end of the day, we wanted to just make sure that we were following. Before I purchased it, I wanted to make sure everything was followed through what the existing rules were. And I understand people could have different opinions, but my driver is to help these other families to be able to enjoy the Mobile heritage in the Spring Hill area that many families have enjoyed. Thank you for your time and happy to answer your questions, Mr. Chairman.
Does any commissioners have any questions for the applicant, Mr. Dean Parker? Seeing none?
I do.
Oh, go right ahead.
Okay, one question that I had, and I know Councilwoman Rich stressed this a lot. Have you had an opportunity to meet with the residents that live in that area?
Yes, ma'am, I did. I actually called when I was given the information last week. I called every single one of them, had a conversation, I believe, with nine to the 10 people that had submitted. And we came to the agreement that they just like big lots and that's what they want. There's not a safety issue they understand and from our conversations with them. It's just what they want. And I said, well, you know, we live in a world where you could have purchased a lot. I waited nine days from the first offer I made to purchase a lot. And at the end of the day, you guys chose not to. I have a vision and I wanted to make it a better community. The house is disheveled, needs to be cleared, and the land needs to be cleaned up and make it a better for the neighborhood. So I met with them, we agreed to disagree, but I heard everybody's point of perspective. This is very important to me to make sure that I understood what they had to say to make sure I wasn't missing anything. And I understand that they may not agree with what my choice is to be forward as the owner of the land. But I also understand that if you want to make a change in our community, then you apply to change the rules. And I'm operating within the rules that have been established before.
Thank you.
I have a question. Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Mr. Parker, when you showed us the lots that you said were similar in size, are they part of this particular subdivision? Or is that a different subdivision to your knowledge? Or does the staff know that?
Well, they're all within, right on the same road or behind us. So it can show on Google Maps where they all, but they all sit right down. So Steve Sheridan's division that was approved, there are the same sized lots are literally, I think there's three homes in between it on Myrtlewood. Right behind the lot on Avalon, there's four homes shoved in on smaller pieces of lot than they are. And then if you move forward on the other side of Myrtlewood, there's three homes. So this has been done not within a large radius, but within the same. I don't know if there's a legal boundary to the subdivision, but they're all on the same road before they hit your next intersecting side street.
Okay. I would sort of be curious about that from the staff's perspective, whether the, when you look at the map, just looking at from, I guess it's from Longview. Those lots seem to be bigger in nature, have bigger characteristics. So I'm wondering whether that was, came in as a separate plat from the one further down Myrtlewood? Or do we know this? Any history there?
So I'll ask our engineer to speak to it. He did a lot of research and has that information. Brett, could you speak to that, please?
Yes, yes, I'll respond, Ms. Rich. So one thing we looked at and one block that is hard to show up on the, I think the screenshot that is currently being streamed, it's hard to see, but right to the east of this, there's Avalon and Battery. Okay, this is all, as you go along Battery Lane, there are, I'm counting on the tax map, six properties that the frontage along Battery is 73 feet. And the rear of these properties are 58 feet, which currently would not be, even meet the standards
Correct.
of the city of Mobile. So we do have lots that in terms of the width themselves and the sizing, you know, the smallest lot in width is 70 feet and it's 70 feet in the rear. The other two are 72 foot and some change even after dedication. So in terms of configuration, I believe these are more conforming to a traditional subdivision where we know in this area, if you were to zoom in or have the ability to see it, tax records, land in this, in this area has been divided very uniquely over time. And there are some, from flag lots to just very unique configurations that have happened over the years. And I believe these actually are more conforming to a traditional subdivision you would see in modern day.
Right.
And they're comparable in size.
I understand what you're saying and I understand about minimum standards being met. But I guess I have a tendency to want to sustain character. I think there are needs to do that in order to stabilize neighborhoods when you, when you keep character because people have different needs. character, because people have different needs, you know, what they're looking for when they're investing and when they're reinvesting in property. It's basically a character that might be different than elsewhere. And then when you look at just putting in the minimum standards of things, it's, I think takes away from character. That's a personal thing, and it's just something I really feel strongly about. That's why I wanted to know about those, the ones that you're comparing. And I understand, Mr. Parker, you know, going by the rules, going by the regulations, meeting the standards. Again, that's not necessarily the character of the area. So just wanted to get that sense of it. I appreciate the information.
Are there any other comments or questions?
And I appreciate it, Ms. Rich. I would, what I tell people is when you make business decisions, you make it based on the facts that are available to you and the legal standings. If somebody wants something different, then they should petition to have their neighborhood changed, to change the characteristics moving forward. And I respect that if the characteristics were different when I moved forward to make the decision to purchase the land, that I may have come to a different decision, but I can only make a decision with the facts that are legally available to me. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, this is Brett Orell again. Can I make one, one just quick comment? And I'll be very brief.
Please be brief.
So the only thing I would state is, I do want to express that the minimum current standard for a lot in the City of Mobile is sixty-foot wide. These lots are seventy at minimum, so we are exceeding that. And the minimum square footage for a lot in the City of Mobile is seventy-two hundred square feet. So we're probably close to anywhere from twenty-five to thirty percent over that threshold. So in terms of square footage, and we've hit a wider width. So I do just want to point out, this is not bare bones minimum by the City of Mobile. This is comparable in nature to others, and it does exceed the minimum requirements. Thank you.
Thank you.
One question about the, these internal setbacks. Is it, and I appreciate how much research you've done on this, but looking like in between Lot One and Two, it looks like there's an eight-foot setback on each side. Is that consistent with the placement in that area?
The setbacks that are shown on this plat are consistent with the minimum standards of zoning ordinance, which apply citywide in R1 areas. While I cannot give you an analysis at this point of the setbacks in the surrounding area, I can show you some lot size comparisons. And I'm not sure, did the screen change to a map that has black and blue and pastel?
Yes.
Okay. This is the site in question, which right now is over twenty thousand square feet. Anything in black is over twenty thousand square feet. The purply pink, orange, yellow, green colors, and then gray is less than seventy-two hundred square feet. The lots proposed on this site fall within the yellow, orange, and purply color, once they're subdivided, which as you can see, you have some of that in the area. The area has a unique land use pattern. There have been large properties that have been divided over the years into smaller lots. You have some unique property lines and streets due to the streetcar route that ran through this area one hundred years ago. You know, again, some of the design, as they were talking about earlier, where the lots are wider at the front, narrower at the rear, you know, you have pipe or panhandle shaped lots, and in some cases have that in reverse. So it is a unique area in terms of its development, in terms of its lot size, and in terms of its lot configuration.
We'll move on to opposition unless there's any further for the application.
The, Mr. Parker and Mr. Orell were the only people admitted into the meeting in support of the application. Before, we have those that are listed in opposition in compliance with the governor's mandate for a remote meeting. I have to read off the names of those who have sent correspondence to the commission, all of which has been forwarded to you. You should have correspondence from Edsel Andrews, Ann Andrews, Catherine Hunter, duplicate from Ann Andrews, Eduardo Berenjano, who is also a speaker, Stephanie Cleveland, Todd Dempsey, who is also a speaker, Carol Hardy, Claire Harmon, Charles Harmon, Margaret McAndrew, Dr. John C. McAndrew, Cherie Gordon, Dr. and Mrs. Patrick Hannigan. Mrs. Hannigan is a speaker. You have a fax with a petition from Dr. Berenjano with thirty-seven signatures on it. Donna Donati, Tim Goodwin, Robert Greer, Fred Helmstein, Henry and Melinda Kush, Louis Shreve, Mrs. Barclay Shreve, Cynthia Tucker, Elaine Bode, Marie Bridges, Christine and William Counts, Councilwoman Gina Gregory. Another fax from Dr. Berenjano with three names in opposition, Lisa A. Swift, Ruth Willbanks, and Mr. and Mrs. J. E. Witherington. The first person signed up to speak in opposition is Eduardo Berenjano.
Dr. Berenjano, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Eduardo Berenjano, and my property is adjacent and just down the hill from the east boundary of one-thirty Myrtle Wood Lane. My address is one-fifty-one Battery Lane.
And you're here to speak in opposition. You have a five-minute timeframe.
Commissioners, my name is Eduardo Berenjano. My property is adjacent and just downhill from the east boundary of one-thirty Myrtle Wood Lane. My address is one-fifty-one Battery Lane. My wife and I have lived here for forty years. We raise our family here and welcome visits from grandchildren. The proposed subdivision would severely damage this neighborhood and our home and property in many ways. First, the property is on a blind curve and many children walk to and from local schools, Mary V. Austin, St. Paul's Episcopal, St. Ignatius Catholic. Children ride bicycle scooters, jog, and use the streets around this corner lot. Having three driveways would be very dangerous to traffic and to children, as well as to mothers pushing their baby strollers. People, young and old, pass by from early morning to evening, enjoying the lovely spot this is. The additional traffic may result in a tragedy, God forbid. Second, the neighborhood has many of its original handsome homes. It is full of beautiful shady centuries-old live oaks and other large trees. They cast cooling shade on the lanes and houses. Tourists and out-of-town visitors often stop to photograph our trees and homes. We should increase the tree canopy in Mobile. Removing trees is contrary to the City of Mobile's tree commission objectives. Mobile is called the city under the trees. No longer would this be the case here. The charming, calm, shady character of the area would be changed forever. It would be a loss to all neighbors. I have submitted a signed petition from more than thirty-eight neighbors objecting to the subdivision proposal. All of them are opposed, and no one's in favor. Third, one-thirty Myrtle Wood Lane is a heavily wooded lot with very large trees, large sasama bushes, and a side lawn. It has a wetland spring pond at the low spot at the bottom of the current driveway, which is below grade. This would be filled in and of course lose its water retention function. This property is a vital neighborhood asset in rainwater absorption. The property is not level and soaps down towards our property. Nevertheless, water has never come onto our property from this property, including in heavy downpours. If it is converted from a water-absorbing lot into a paved-over, water-imperious lot, then the green space and large trees would be removed. The rains that fall would pour into our property and run under the foundation of our one-hundred-and-ten-year-old house, which is one of the original ones in the area. This would cause severe water and erosion damage to our home and lot. It would cause us irretrievable damage. No amount of tinkering with water drainage would avoid it. Much more water would flow on downhill past my property and affect many other properties as well. Currently, the sewer system is overwhelmed by heavy rainstorms. A subdivision will place even more load on the water system. Fourth, the proposed losses would destroy our personal privacy, since the new homeowners would look right into our bedrooms and bathrooms from their houses, day and night. This would be a deep and continuing invasion of privacy, and it is a severe personal damage. This is also why I object so strenuously. Fifth, the setback from the street should be twenty-five feet, and this proposal is for a fifteen-foot setback. At another developer at one-sixteen Myrtle Wood, just four lots south, was denied a variance in April, May of this year for the same reason. This should be denied here as well, to be consistent. Sixth, the developer has only one stated interest, and that is to maximize his profit. He does not live here. He has no stake in the well-being of neighboring property owners, nor the neighborhood itself. He has no other interest in it. I respectfully ask that this subdivision proposal be denied. The lot should be kept as a single-family home property to preserve the integrity and safety of the neighborhood and of the village of Spring Hill. Thank you, Commissioners.
Any of the commissioners have any questions for Dr. Berenjano? We'll move on to the next speaker, Ms. Papas. You're on mute.
Next speaker is Mrs. Linda Saint John.
Ms. Saint John, state your address for the record, please.
Okay, can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, my name is Linda Saint John. I live at three-twenty Avalon Street. My house is literally right around the corner and downhill from this property. For the record, I'd like to say I could throw a stone into that property almost, and no one has contacted me about this development at all. Our lot that we bought was a hundred and forty feet across the front. We didn't try to split the lot into two seventy-foot lots because we knew it would be out of character for the neighborhood. Many of the houses in our neighborhood are built on large lots with setbacks with a minimum of twenty-five feet. And the historic, and a lot of them, a lot more. The historic home that Mrs. Mr. Berenjano's is set back a hundred and twenty feet. And the house directly across from this proposed subdivision, adjacent across Battery Lane, is a hundred and thirty-five feet. As Margaret said, it is very unique in a lot of ways. The proposed subdivision development showing three seventy-foot lots is completely out of character with the existing area. This is not a traditional subdivision, as the developer stated. This is an old, established neighborhood, and a historic neighborhood at that. The proposed subdivision is basically at four converging streets because Battery splits Avalon in half. It is very difficult to see around all the corners. I drive through this intersection several times a day, and I cannot imagine the impact that three driveways will have on this already busy intersection with all the cut-through school traffic going to three different schools and people trying to get to Spring Hill Avenue. Moving the driveway a little bit is not going to solve this problem. I know the argument of increased traffic in dangerous conditions is often used at the planning commission to oppose potential adverse development, but in this case, I'm certain it is a valid argument. This development will no doubt make an already stressed intersection more dangerous. I have at least sixty people walk, run, and stroll children by my house each day and into the night. Adding this development to the mix will definitely make the neighborhood more dangerous for pedestrians to navigate. The development that the developer is referencing down the street that Steve Sheridan is doing is not on a corner lot, and it is not being split into three lots. It is being split into two lots. In order for this developer to fit three houses on this property, he'll have to cut down every tree. One of the most appealing characteristics of this Old Mobile neighborhood and a lot of others is the beautiful large tree canopy. With no trees and shrubs and the dramatic slope to the property, it will be extremely difficult to control the sediment and stormwater from running down the hill into Battery Lane and Avalon where I live. The drain for Avalon is directly in front of my house. Old-established neighborhoods in Spring Hill are continually being targeted by a handful of developers who have no regard for the integrity of neighborhoods. They tear down existing homes, cut all the trees, divide the property into the smallest allowable pieces, and try to circumvent the city ordinances that all the other property owners complied with. They build excessively large homes on small lots, then encroach on the privacy of the adjacent property owners and compromise the intended character of the neighborhood. They destroy the existing tree canopy that causes drainage issues and create dangerous traffic situations in quiet neighborhoods where people stroll down the street all day and night. All this at the expense of the quality of life and property values of the people who lived in the neighborhood for many years. This is an ongoing trend, and it is destroying one of Mobile's most charming and historic areas and needs to be discouraged, or the character and integrity of Spring Hill will eventually be lost forever. Please don't allow this practice to continue, not only in Spring Hill, but also in some of the other older established neighborhoods in Mobile at the expense of many and the financial benefit of a few. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saint John. Does anybody, any commissioners have any questions for Ms. Saint John? We'll move on to the third speaker in opposition, Ms. Papas.
Lindsay Hannigan.
Hi, can y'all hear me?
We can. Please state your name, full name and address for the record.
Okay, my name is Lindsay Hannigan, and I live at one-three-one Myrtle Wood Lane. I've lived here for twenty-five years, and I have a one-acre lot that I could have subdivided, but chose not to because I did not want to take away from the character of the neighborhood. We have one of the most beautiful streets in Mobile, I'm told often by many people. And I could go on and on about how pretty the street is and how this subdivision would ruin that. But the main thing, and I'll keep it short, I would like to talk about is how dangerous this is, putting this subdivision in this particular place. I, my kitchen and living room window face the stop sign at Battery and Myrtle Wood. And just this morning, which is typical, cars were honking, going crazy, and I look out the window because the stop sign at Battery Lane, where you're going to come up Battery and go right or left on Myrtle Wood, is far back, placed far back from Myrtle Wood. So people stop at that stop sign, but they have to move on up into Myrtle Wood once they've stopped, and they just start going into Myrtle Wood. Well, that's where we have so many almost wrecks. If you were to put a driveway on Myrtle Wood Lane right there, you are just begging for accidents to happen. There is no way, in my opinion, and I wish you would come stand on the street and see what I'm talking about. A driveway right there is just, it's reckless, and I feel so strongly about it. I would like to have people to come out and I can show you, or you can see it for yourself. And yes, there would be a lot of extra traffic, and I understand that too. But I'm very worried about people, pedestrians, getting hit by cars. Like Linda said, we have so many people walking and jogging through our neighborhood. So it is extremely, extremely dangerous. And I just ask you, please do not go forward with this subdivision.
Thank you, Ms. Hannigan. Any commissioners have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none, we'll move on to the fourth and final speaker for opposition, in opposition, Ms. Papas.
Mr. Todd Dempsey. Mr. Todd Dempsey.
Welcome.
Everybody hear me?
We can, Mr. Dempsey. State your full name and address for the record.
My name is Todd Dempsey. I live at one forty-three Myrtlewood Lane, which is just north of the proposed subdivision.
Go ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Todd Dempsey. Like I said, I live at one thirty-four Myrtlewood Lane. I'm a real estate developer by trade. I've done over eighty commercial real estate development transactions in my career. So I've spoken before numerous planning commissions in the past. I share that with you just so you understand that I'm speaking from a place of experience. So I thank each of you for taking the time to listen. That brings us to the subdivision application before you today. While the applicant has a right to apply for a subdivision, we as surrounding property owners have the right to oppose it. After all, what happens to this property is going to affect all of us directly, since we are going to have to suffer the consequences if the planning commission approves this. I understand staff has recommended approval for this subdivision. Basically, all that means is that the application checks all the boxes for required submitted items, and the newly proposed planted lots meet the basic city code requirements for what is a legal lot. However, if staff approvals were all that were required for property changes, we wouldn't even have a planning commission. There'd be no need. A planning commission's duty is one as an advisory group is responsible for ensuring the best quality development and living environment for the city and its citizens. In short, your job is to decide if the change before you is good for an area or not, even if it checks all the code requirements. As a result, a planning commission should take into account the position of the people being affected most by the changes they are voting on as it affects our living environment. I believe you have been inundated with emails from surrounding property owners who are against this subdivision. As Ms. Papas said, you have been presented lists from Dr. Baragnano with lists of over thirty signatures of people against it. No one is in support of this except the applicant. That should mean something to you all when you make your decision. I'm against the subdivision specifically for three reasons. Number one, these tiny lots are not in conjunction with the character and integrity of Myrtlewood Lane. The character and integrity of the street must be protected to protect our property values. This is a mature neighborhood with high-end homes, not starter homes. The street has houses valued at over one million dollars on it. Taking one large lot and chopping it up is going to negatively affect our values by putting smaller homes and lots in the same residential market as ours. Second, we do not want any more density in our neighborhood. It is becoming unsafe, just as Ms. St. John said, and it's not hyperbole, it's the truth, and I can prove it. My dog was killed while I was walking him on a leash three years ago at the corner of Myrtlewood and Stein in front of Mr. and Mrs. Shree, two of the people who have signed the petition against this. Adding density to the area by chopping up lots to allow more houses just adds more cars on an already overcrowded road. I specifically have been asking my city council rep for three years to put sidewalks in this area, and we have not gotten any yet because I'm terrified a child will get killed after my dog was killed in front of me. We do not need more houses or more cars in our area, especially a driveway for a lot on a blind corner at Myrtlewood and Battery. The third reason I'm against this is I'm personally tired of developers who do not live in the area coming into my neighborhood and doing things to lots that they would not want done in their own neighborhood. I have talked with the applicant, and he lives on a large parcel land in West Mobile. I asked him if he would be happy with me chopping up lots next to his house in West Mobile, and he said no. Somehow, he thinks it's okay to do that to our property, but not his. In conclusion, while the applicant is saying that the lots meet the city of Mobile requirements, and that is true, we aren't talking about the city of Mobile. We are talking about this subdivision on this street in Myrtlewood. This is a bare-bones subdivision by Myrtlewood standards. As the planning commission stated, there have been subdivisions approved like this in the area. This developer specifically has done this down the road at Stein and Dogwood. Residents were not happy about it, but were not educated on, at the time, on the process by which to voice their objections, so it went through. The same thing happened to Gil Yard and Battery. As a result, property owners have been educated now on how to go about voicing their opinion, so the chopping up of lots does not continue. Just recently, Steve Sheridan was denied changes to his application for his property at one sixteen Myrtlewood because residents have had enough and become educated on how to voice their opposition. I urge you to please deny this subdivision application. We live here. The applicant does not. We have to live with the decisions you all make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. Do any Commissioners have any questions for Mr. Dempsey? Seeing none, that's the fourth and final speaker in opposition. This is a reminder that the applicant, Dean Parker, will have two minutes to rebut in accordance with commission rules.
Mr. Parker, you're on mute.
I would say that some of the acts that presented were not quite accurate. My family home that is referring to a subdivision that was being tried to sell that cost for over five years, and no one had the wherewithal or the budget to buy that size of a lot. I disagree with the thing being said, but I'm going to allow my Brett Porell, our engineer, to state the facts on the description. So Brett, I'll go over here.
Okay, yes, so, so hearing all comments, just getting back to understanding everyone's voice, reading through everything that has been presented. You know, we, we believe this according to, and I appreciate Ms. Papas showing the color-coded map. That's the first I've ever seen of that, that illustrates like-size properties within the area. I do want to point out again that this, this area has seen unique configurations over a long period of time in which we don't really fit that category. We fit more of a traditional sized lot in terms of how lot lines are positioned. Once again, just want to ask that the commission consider modifying item number eight to allow a driveway to be placed, approved by traffic engineering, to be placed as close to lot two as allowed by the right. And we have done that on previous applications in Spring Hill and other areas. We believe this, this meets with the sizing of lots in the direct vicinity, meaning less than a hundred feet away or maybe two hundred feet away. These, these lots along Battery Lane are substandard to current standards, and we are exceeding those. So we feel confident that this configuration with additional dedication, other items, meeting all the setback requirements of the city of Mobile, not asking for any variance from those, not asking for any variance of lot-to-width ratios, that it should be approved as submitted with a modification to item number eight. So we thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Porell. I will now close the public hearing session of Agenda Item Five, one thirty Myrtlewood Lane. It's been recommended by staff for tentative approval. I'll entertain a motion.
Well, just a point of discussion first, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt.
So, yeah, so I would like to hear from traffic engineering because the report, the report that we had on hand was kind of the generic, the generic write-up that we see on all of our applications. So if we could just kind of hear from traffic engineering, since we do have some substandard roads and we're, you know, not great geometry on some of these approaches here to the intersections and stuff.
So, yeah, you got pretty much the standard commentation I have given with other residential lots, with the exception of trying to limit the driveway. The intention that I had behind wanting some kind of limitation on that corner lot was because of some of the other corner lots that have developed, not just in this area, but in the city, sometimes they like the circular driveway that goes from one roadway to the other, and that was primarily what I was trying to avoid, was additional opportunity for cars to be possibly parked in the, in a circular driveway in the front of the house. So we can, we can work with the applicant if that is the desire of the commission for the subdivision to allow a driveway on Battery for lot one as close to lot two as possible. We have gotten complaints and request, service requests about this intersection. I believe we actually even have one outstanding right now requesting an always stop at this intersection. It, it probably is not going to fix the issue if, if it were to be installed because as the residents have stated, yes, the stop sign is set back. It's because there's a tree at the corner, and it can't be closer. But that's the issue of, if the stop, if the vehicles that are supposed to be stopping now aren't already stopping now, another stop sign on Myrtlewood is not going to help it because probably the, the majority of that traffic is making a northbound right turn. So we were still kind of in a, in a analyzing pattern on looking at potential for an always stop at that intersection. We've not ruled it out, but it's, it's still being considered. Yes, there has been issues. It's the curve to the south. We, we have, we've addressed that with the neighborhood that we've installed an always stop to the south of here at Myrtlewood and Stein. That, that curve in Myrtlewood creates an issue, especially if there are vehicles traveling at a high rate of speed. And yes, as they have stated, there are pedestrians in the roadway. There's a lot of vegetation actually right along the edge of the roadway that pushes the pedestrians out even farther into the road. And so it's, it's not people walking just on the curb. Sometimes they're, they have to be in the middle of the street to avoid some of the vegetation. So we, we've seen this happen with other sites in the area. You, you got the general comments from us. We look at traffic based on the little site that we have in front of us. We don't have the opportunity to look neighborhood-wide and ask for one developer who's possibly looking at building three homes to do some overall plan or overall study. Unfortunately, this has been the trend in this area to take the larger lots and create the smaller lots. But we have, we don't have a mechanism to require a study that will say that this road needs to be widened, or this curve needs to be improved, or that sort of thing. We don't have, we don't have that opportunity. And so that's why you got the, the general basic comments from our department.
Mary Beth, this is Doug. The, the complaints or concerns from the neighbors that y'all have received about this intersection, has that been over a six-month time period or for a couple of years?
It's, it's ongoing. I can't say when, I mean, I know we have a current, a current issue in front of us at the moment, and I know it's come up in the past, but it's, it, it's not repetitive, and it hasn't only been in the last couple of months. It's, it's been an ongoing complaint and concern they've had.
You mentioned a four-way stop sign would not solve the issue. What issue are you referring to, if I may ask?
No, that's, that's fine. Given the, given the roadway geometrics, I'm not so, not so much talking about the narrowness of the roadway, but giving the travel path vehicles in this area, Myrtlewood, Battery, Avalon, that's prob, that is probably, in my opinion, of looking, and the neighbors may, may think otherwise, but that's, that's the general movement through there. If they're cutting through, they would be coming from Avalon, taking Battery to Myrtlewood. So the always stop, if Battery is not stopping and they're causing an accident, it's either, it's with northbound or possibly southbound Myrtlewood traffic. If Battery is not stopping now, putting stops on Myrtlewood is not going to make Battery still stop. Does that make sense? If Battery is the minor, I hate to say the minor street, but at a T-intersection, that's the minor street. And if that's where we're having the issue stopping, putting stops on the major street's not going to make the problem go away.
Understood. Thank you.
Mary Beth, let me add, I'm, I'm a nearby resident myself on, on the one McCree Lane, and it's very seasonal there. When school is out, there's, there's no problem. But, but when Mary B. Austin is in school, which is nine months out of the year, it's a heavily traveled road. People cut through from Old Shell Road to Spring Hill. You know, much of the, much, I believe, because I drive that route twice a day, much of the problem, I believe, with the safety is it is the lot is very overgrown right now, and you can't see. It's very much a blind corner because the, the lot has been so overgrown that the vegetation just blocks, obstructs any, any sight distance that you would have in a, in a corner. So if you're on Myrtlewood heading north, you can't see the vehicles coming from Battery. And most of that's just large shrubs. So that's just a perspective of somebody that drives there. Actually, the house across the street from this lot, Margaret, I don't know if you can, it's not the house on the corner, but it's the second house down, maybe right there, that green spot. No, up, to your left, to your left.
Not to the west.
There's great myrtles that are literally growing in the road that should be cut down. They're just, you know, the vegetation was very beautiful in there, but it has been let go by many of the property owners, and that's what, in my opinion, causes most of the visual obstruction to the drivers.
If I could comment, I don't want to interrupt, Nick, but...
That's all I've got.
Thank you. So I can go?
Oh, I do have one more question, and this is for staff. The applicant has not requested a sidewalk waiver, so if this were to go forward and homes were built, sidewalks would have to be built in front of all three properties. Is that correct? You're muted, Margaret.
That is correct. A sidewalk waiver would be required. Is this the obstruction?
That's correct, and it's literally growing into whatever very limited right-of-way there might be there. And then you can see, I mean, most of it is large shrubs. In a lot of cases, it's just vines that have grown up into trees. The property has not been maintained for a number of years. You can see the houses there are all very well-maintained. Keep spinning. A little bit more. Yeah, keep going. I want to show the corner. You know, the, the corner is just a blind corner that's there. And so you can't see vehicles, you know, that are, that are approaching the intersection.
Well, no matter if you got, if you've got one, you got one lot there, you got three lots there, you're going to have people with landscaping. So no matter what, we're going to have, we're going to have an obstruction there.
Right.
I just feel you more likely have, have open lawns, you know, with landscaping around the house as well.
Okay, I, I have, if I could weigh in, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for, for this. When you talk about things that go into the right-of-way, the city would have complete permission, if it was recorded into a three-one-one, to ask that the city come out. Once it's in the city's right-of-way, of course, they could also get with the property owner and ask them to trim back. So that can be cured without saying that getting it highly developed with three different homes would then cure the visibility. Because now that the city's unnoticed that there are shrubs in the right-of-way, I, I would hope that a three-one-one would be automatically written to take care of that. I, I really have listened carefully, and I don't think this is coming a shock to anybody because I've often argued character of neighborhoods. And we do, we give people notification on a subdivision when they are abutting property owners. That is our, this is our protocol. So if you didn't abut the property, you did not get notice. If your, if your neighbor didn't call you about it, you didn't learn. Hence, all these other somewhat out-of-character development that increases the safe, or decreases safety and value of what people have when they initially moved into, to the neighborhood. I, we, we do this a lot as planning commissioners. I have a lot of institutional knowledge, been around the corner a long time, and we often just say, this is how it is. This is what it needs to be. And again, when you invade a character of a neighborhood, you take away its stability. And the city owes that to residents. Three hundred feet telling somebody that they're going to get something all subdivided is not enough when everyone, when a neighborhood is invested, when people have a character that they like to come home to, that they want to invest in. So it's, I know that people are more aware today in this area, and I, and I applaud their efforts for organizing and letting this planning commission know about the change of character, which in their opinion would not create a safe environment. And just saying that getting this developed would take care of that corner, the city needs to be aware that that stuff is out in the right-of-way. So we have a right to that now, take care of it, but they could also get with the property owner to prune and pull back what is creating a very safe environment. So to say to get to develop, overdeveloped is an answer. So, to say to get to develop, overdeveloped is an answer, I think is not in keeping with the neighborhood. So, I, I would like to, I think you know where I'm gonna be coming on this. And, and I appreciated the neighbors coming out and, and, and taking ownership in their neighborhood and wanting to have a quality that this city should protect for safety and, and their investment. And I think, I'm just repeating myself, but anyway, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just, I had one more thought that I jotted down here that I, I neglected to mention earlier. You know, the, the minimum standards came up several times in, in the last, you know, in, in the last remarks that people were making. And I just want to point out that the minimum standards are, are one aspect of what we consider whenever we're looking at. I mean, each, each subdivision is a, is a different situation. So, we're looking at protecting general health, safety, and welfare, correlating it with the, you know, adjacent developments, and, and, you know, aligning it with public utilities and services and things like that. So, you know, saying that this has met the minimum standards, so it just needs to like coast on through is not really, uh, not really super compelling to me. And we've, we've got to think about this from a, we got to think about the whole hog. So, so I just wanted to point that out. You know, if we were just running on minimum standards, none of this would have to really come to us. It could all just be administrative. So, you know, I've spoken with, with Councilor Gregory. You know, she, she made her opinion known, obviously, in writing, but it also vocalized her experience in the area as well as obviously hearing from all the neighbors. So, I would, I would like to make a motion to deny the application based on, based on concerns regarding, regarding general safety and welfare in the area as well as unsuitability with regard to adjacent development.
I second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I would just like, this is Jennifer. I would just like to mention that I agree with Ms. Rich and Mr. Anderson's comments. I just don't think this is in keep, the three lots are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. I think older neighborhoods is with, just, they need our protection when the neighbors care passionately about what is happening. Just like Mr. Anderson said, it's not just about minimum standards. It's about character, stability, safety, all of the issues. Perhaps if this was a different division of lots, maybe less lots, I might be more supportive of it. But I agree with y'all's opinions. Thank you.
I'd like that more point of information. This with a different hat on, not a city engineer hat, but as a private, private individual. I too developed a piece of property. As the crow flies, I could literally throw a rock to it myself. And it was a, it was an eyesore to the community. The lot was completely overgrown. Had an old house on it that I did save, that we completely remodeled. And what sits there today, it's four brand-new, very nice homes, very well-kept, which are an amenity to the neighborhood, I believe. We built sidewalks. I think we got the only sidewalks in the area. We got a nice entrance fence. We have underground utilities. So, we took the best, you know, of what might people say are in West Mobile and put underground utilities and did it nice. But we also kept the integrity of nice homes that sit within, within the area. And so, the challenge that I see was unfortunately, that the property in question has been, has been for sale for quite a long time. Nobody would be willing to take, take a risk. And right now, what you have is one house that is an eyesore with a piece of property that's not being maintained. And what I have to believe is that where the property is, you will end up, you would end up with three very high-end homes, very well-maintained, very expensive. And I just, I just believe that's what the outcome will be, and with sidewalks in there, to which most of the area to there is not amenable to sidewalks because of some of the vegetation and limited right-of-way. So, I appreciate everybody's different perspectives on it. You know, I just have one of my own, which, I mean, I was, I personally did it myself, and the end result, you know, was not profit motivated. I did it so that I could, my kids would be closer to school. And the end result was a very nice, you know, nice addition to the neighborhood. So, that's just another perspective that I don't know that most of the opposition is not maybe considering. So, I just wanted to share that with, with all the commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Annberger. We do have a motion to deny the application for subdivision. It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Go ahead.
We need the basis for denial so that we can incorporate that in the letter of decision.
I, I think Matt in his motion mentioned safety concerns and character and compatibility. Matt, if you want to restate that for the record, please do.
Yeah, no, that's correct. I said those things.
Safety, character, and compatibility. Okay.
Right.
I'll second that motion. I'm very familiar with this area. Years ago, actually, I've been in this house, and I'll underscore the compatibility concerns and acknowledge that, and reiterate the, what's been stated, that these are minimum standards, and it is more than that. This board is a responsibility to take into account more than just numbers. And I think it sounds like the board is well-aware of this area. And I want to thank the neighborhood for speaking out and being engaged with the committee.
If there's some, if there's something I could add as far as for the record, if I may?
We need to move to a vote.
Well, I.
As the owner of all these people speaking, do I get a chance to speak since you guys have made so many past comments, past the comments?
Don't let him speak. No.
The, excuse me, excuse me. The applicant, you, you guys had a two-minute rebuttal. This is the deliberation of the commissioners' timeframe.
I, I would like to, I would just like to get to the record to say that the traffic engineer did let the commission know that the concerns about the safety, the, the issue with the stopping and all the traffic goes back, has a length of time. It's not just recent knowledge to her office. And I think that's very, very important because safety is essential to good neighborhoods. So, I, I believe that should be in the record. She was very clear about that.
Thank you, Ms. Rich.
You're welcome.
Ms. Papas, is it appropriate to go by roll call vote here?
Yes.
I'll bring the motion to a vote. Mr. Kirk Matei.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Carley.
Opposed. Yes, opposed.
For confirmation, your, your, the, the motion is to deny the application.
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Bess Rich.
Yes. Go with the motion opposed.
Mr. Nick Annberger.
No.
Mr. Matt Anderson.
Yes.
Ms. Shirley Sessions.
I go with the motion to oppose.
Ms. Jennifer Denison.
Aye.
And I will cast my vote as yes to oppose. Motion to deny the application has passed. We'll move on to item number six under new planning subdivisions. Thirty-seven fifteen Riviera Duchene Road. The application from staff has been recommended for tentative approval. Ms. Papas, is our applicant present?
I am admitting Miller Dawson into the meeting. They are currently connecting to audio.
And do you expect any speakers in opposition for number six?
Uh, no, sir. Miller Dawson, are you in the meeting? Austin Engineering. They're in the meeting. They're connected to audio. Um.
From staff that we need to, to just listen to for the tentative approval? Looks like there's eight conditions, all normal.
Margaret, this is an existing lot with a house. You're just making it a legal lot of record? Is that correct?
That's correct, and. Um, I'm sorry, the applicant keeps muting themselves. What occurred was the, there was right-of-way here and it was vacated. So, to incorporate that vacated right-of-way into the lot, they filed a subdivision. It's my understanding they have no opposition to the conditions. Mr. Austin, are you in the meeting? Can you hear us?
Mr. Austin, are you available or present? Is this another one we need to come back to?
Staff did not receive it. We had forwarded the reports to the applicant. We did not receive any correspondence where there were, they had any concerns regarding the recommendations.
And you were in constant communication, or there was the opportunity to bring up questions if they had any?
Yes. Uh, you know, there are no, all of the conditions relate to notations. Reflection of the current right-of-way along Riviera Duchene, which is done, and the setback which is done. So, there are no conditions on the recommendation that would typically cause concerns.
One more chance for Mr. Austin. Are you available? Based on what you said, Margaret, we'll entertain a motion based on item number six, tentative approval.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to the new section of the agenda, new planned unit development applications, number seven. Four thousand seventy-four, that's four zero seventy-four, Layton Place Drive. Staff recommends findings of fact for approval for this PUD. Also, conditions of the application approval, of which there are fourteen listed. Ms. Papas, is the applicant present?
Yes. Chris Lee, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Austin was trying to get in. He was texting me like mad. He apologizes for missing the last one.
Oh, okay. Were, were, did he have any concerns, or was he just trying to communicate?
He was just, he was just trying to communicate, and he was telling me to try to tell you all that he agrees.
Thankfully. All right, Mr. Lee. Presentation of the item number seven, four oh seven four Layton Place Drive. Are you good with the recommendations for finding, of finding a fact and the condition?
Yes, sir. I agree with him.
Ms. Papas, is there anybody in opposition to item number seven?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lee is the only one in the meeting for this application.
We'll entertain a motion for number seven.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations, adopting findings of facts A, B, C, and D.
Second.
The motion has been properly moved and seconded, A, B, C, and D, finding of fact. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Moving on to the number eight on the agenda. Sixty-four eighty, sixty-four eighty-five, sixty-four ninety, sixty-five hundred, and sixty-five ten Dockside Drive. Staff recommends approval with finding of fact for this PUD along with conditions. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir. The applicant is Jerry Byrd. He's in the meeting. I've asked him to unmute before he speaks. I would advise the commission that he is the only one in attendance for this application. However, staff did forward to you concerns from Ms. Zelda Finch, who is a nearby property owner.
I'm here, Margaret.
Go ahead, Mr. Byrd.
Yeah. We're in favor of, or we know have no objections to the recommendation. The lady that sent the letter in owns property facing on Hamilton Boulevard, adjoining our south property line. I mean, it's all wood. It's undeveloped property. The, her property is on I-one, ours is on I-two. And certainly, we don't think there would be any adverse effect to her property. And something to, to add on this is if we were developing those three lots with the equipment storage, truck storage lot, and have a separate driveway, she wouldn't be notified. I mean, it's because we're joining with this other lot, and a one single drive between is the only reason any of the neighbors was notified. But like I say, it's, it's all an industrial area. And we think it should be approved the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Byrd or the applicant from the commissioners? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for item, agenda number eight.
Move to approve subject staff recommendation with finding of fact A through F.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded with finding of fact A through F. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Next agenda, item number nine, twenty-seven eighty-one, that's two seven eight one McMae Drive. It's recommended for approval based on finding of, of fact for the PUD along with conditions, and there are ten of them. Ms. Papas, is the applicant present?
Yes, it's Mr. Byrd, and he is the only one in the meeting for this application.
Yes, Byrd, do you agree with everything?
Yes, we agree with him. No problem with the condition.
Thank you, Mr. Byrd. Any questions or comments from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion for item number nine.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations with findings of fact A, B, and C.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded with findings of fact A, B, and C. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. New rezoning applications, section of the agenda, number ten. South Terminus of Bowden Road. Staff recommends application of approval with one finding of fact and a couple of conditions. Is the applicant present?
Mr. Chairman, I have just admitted into the meeting Joe S. Racy's office. Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me? Let's see.
Yeah, yes, Sam, I can. I have also admitted into the meeting Mr. Robert Isaacson. He is also with the application.
Okay.
Do you have any comments for the application of number ten, which has been recommended for approval based on findings of fact and the conditions listed? Do you have any comments for the application of number ten, which has been recommended for approval based on findings of fact and the conditions listed? Seeing none, are there any? Any, either you or the other, uh, one on the app, person from, okay, great, so.
I've been assembling this property for twenty-five years as an industrial development. And when the property was brought into the city, the purple to the north was brought in as I-1. I, I didn't own any of the yellow, and so we didn't request it to be brought in as anything other than whatever the city normally brings it in. I have since purchased this property, which is forty acres. The property to its east and the property to its right, for the most part, are wetlands. But our property, for the most part, is dry. And so we're, we plan to, uh, add that to our industrial development, and we're requesting, there's no houses on this property, it's vacant. Uh, and we probably, uh, request that, uh, you rezone it from, uh, to I-1, as the property to the north is.
Any comments or questions for commissioners for Mr. Isaacson?
Just, uh, Margaret, would you put the floodplain map back up? I want to make sure that, that Mr. Isaacson and his engineering firm is aware, uh, of the, of the impacts of the property with the flood zones, uh, floodway, which Margaret's marking, and then floodplain, which is adjacent to that. And we, the city does not allow fill in the floodplains without going to a, to a flood study unless you do a cut and bill balancing of that. So just note that there's some very, you know, substantial, uh, efforts, engineering efforts that are, that are necessary in order to go in there and, and develop any of that that you see in yellow or in, in tan. I just might want to make sure that, that the engineer and his, uh, and his, and his, you know, uh, and applicant, don't just go out there, that this is a, they have to permit that stuff very, very carefully. Really, the only place that's, I'm just going to say, kind of easy to develop is the area, the white area. Again, the yellow, uh, and the tan are both within the one hundred and five hundred year floodplains, and the city treats those the exact same. Uh, so the applicant just needs to make sure and his engineer that they take that, take that into, into consideration.
And we agree with you, Mr. Amber.
I have a question of Nick, as long as he's talking about that, does that require Corps of Engineering permits, and it, was that a requirement?
Uh, well, yeah. The, the wetlands, I can tell you the wetland, you know, you have the National Wetland Inventory map, but then the applicant would go back through our likely biologists to go through, they're actually determined if those actually are wetlands, it actually delineated, uh, to where they actually are. Yeah, the, the, the better thing for development here is any retention ponds, you know, are, are immediately adjacent to, to a body of water. So we are able to work with the applicant, and some, and in some cases not require, uh, storm retention ponds for volume. We might require storm retention for water quality, but not for volume, so, uh, there's parts of it that's good, again, that needs adjacent to a tightly influenced by, body of water, but because it is, uh, you know, within the floodplain, there's just no fill that's allowed in there. You can cut and fill and balance the fill. Uh, I mean, it's kind of like, if you think about your bathtub being full of water, you know, you can put more things in it, but you got to take something out first. And so the applicant, just as he goes forward with site plans or buildings or anything like that, he needs to take that into consideration. Work, work very closely with the, uh, with the permitting staff, you know, for, for the improvements that they're proposing.
And, and that's already as part of the standard that he's agreeing to and we're voting on, correct? I mean, that, you're not just bringing this out because it's new news, correct?
You're just wanting. Yeah, this is part of the, part of the city.
All right, I just wanted to make sure that, I didn't know if it required Corps of Engineering, so, okay.
I just wanted to make sure the applicant was clear that, that, you know, I mean, I realize this is, this is a zoning applicant, uh,
Right.
But the next step is the permitting, and I want to just go on record of making sure, uh, he and the engineer are quite clear of, uh, you know, some floodplain challenges with this property.
Okay, I appreciate that, thanks.
Any further comments or discussion from commissioners on item number ten, rezoned to I-1? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve subject staff recommendations.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Group applications, the last item on the agenda. Thirty fifty-nine Dolphin Square Connector and thirty sixty Dolphin Street. Uh, eleven A with a subdivision and eleven B with a PUD. Uh, the, we'll take these separately, I believe, Ms. Papas?
Yes, please, and I have admitted Tom Clark into the meeting. Oh, no, I haven't, here it comes.
Mr. Clark, are you there?
Tom, please unmute. Mr. Clark's in the meeting, I have asked him to unmute. I do know that he had requested a clarification on the traffic engineering comment, uh, which we communicated with Traffic Engineering and Mary Beth Bergen. Um, she, Ms. Bergen, which, Mary Beth, if you're still there, uh, please, can, uh, thank you. Uh, they had a concern regarding the condition on the curb cut. Uh, and I believe you were agreeable to changing the language to read, lot one is limited to the curb cuts as illustrated on the appro, approved PUD. Lot two is limited to no more than two curb cuts to Dolphin Square Connector than the standard any changes in that. Yeah, you're here now, Tom.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark. It's been recommended for tentative approval with subject to conditions, this was, this is on the subdivision part of the application, not the PUD.
All right, we have, uh, no objections and are good with staff's recommendation.
Any comments? We are taking these separately, correct, Margaret? A then B?
Please, yes.
Any comments or questions from commissioners on eleven A subdivision of thirty fifty-nine Dolphin Square Connector and thirty sixty Dolphin Street? See none, I'll entertain a motion for eleven A.
Move to approve subject staff recommendation.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion eleven A subdivision passes, eleven B, PUD, staff recommends approval with findings of fact A, B, C, and D, along with conditions enumerated, eight of them. Are you okay, Mr. Clark, with the findings of fact and the conditions on the PUD?
Yes, we are good with staff recommendations.
Any questions or comments from commissioners? I'll entertain a motion to approve eleven B.
Move to approve subject staff conditions, adopting findings of facts A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
This concludes the me, the Mobile City Planning Commission meeting for Thursday, October seventh. Is there any other business, uh, after the main agenda items, Ms. Papas?
We need to go back to number one, please.
Thank you. Almost, almost didn't forget.
Um, I have posted notes all over my desk. Um, I have admitted Ms. Bettis into the meeting. Ms. Bettis, can you hear us?
Yes, ma'am.
Welcome, Ms. Bettis.
Uh, Ms. Bettis, I had explained to the commission, uh, that you were looking to modify your site plan to possibly eliminate or greatly reduce the need for the parking variance. Is that an accurate representation of your intention?
Well, we talked with the engineer as of, uh, this morning, we got a text back from him, and he said that that would be impossible. So what we're going to do is just leave it as is with the six parking spaces with no new additional spaces.
Okay, so you are going to be proceeding with that request to the Board of Adjustment?
With no new parking spaces and leave the, the, the building at a fifty by thirty, I believe that's what it is, a fifty by thirty, with just six, um, parking spaces that required, um, that, that comes along with that size building.
So with no changes, does it still go to Board of Adjustment, Ms. Papas?
That's correct, and variance, ma'am.
Go ahead, so you, the site plan that you currently have is the one you wish to move forward with?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, uh, the, it would be back before the board? Uh, Ms. York, would that be before the board at their November meeting, or did they set it for their December agenda?
They did a sixty-day holdover, so it'll be on the December sixth agenda for the Board of Zoning Adjustment.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, that means it cannot be back up to the Planning Commission until the December sixteenth meeting, which would still be within the board's fifteen-day appeal period. So we would recommend a holdover until the board meets, um, in December, so the December sixteenth meeting.
Ms. Bettis, are you good with the holdover, uh, post-Board of Adjustment meeting for the Planning Commission meeting, December sixteen?
I am in agreement with that.
Thank you, Ms. Bettis. Entertaining a motion?
Removed. Second.
Properly moved and seconded to hold over, item number one, twenty-six sixty-two Philin Jim Street to the Planning Commission meeting, agenda item, agenda for December sixteenth. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That should conclude our agenda items, Ms. Papas and staff and commissioners. Any other business items, specific maybe next meeting?
Uh, yes, I have two or three things. One, uh, let me pull this up. Is everyone looking at a Gulf Coast Underground subdivision from February third?
Yes.
Okay, uh, we need an administrative approval. They are asking to have that setback line along Abrams. Uh, they would request a twenty-foot setback, which is compliant with zoning ordinance requirements, and we have done that on many subdivisions in the past, but since it was approved with that line, I wanted to get the commission's approval to adjust it to a zoning compliant location.
Does that need a formal motion?
Please.
Wait, so we're, we're trying, so we're trying to move it from twenty-five to twenty? I can't read it, the sign.
That is correct, let me blow it up a little.
Is it just to accommodate that, that building that's already there, Margaret?
Yes, and for any future, and twenty feet is allowed by the zoning ordinance along the side street by right. And this is a side street.
And Abrams Street is already fifty foot right-of-way? Is that what I'm going to do? Okay.
That is correct, yes, ma'am.
I'll move to an administrative, uh, change, the twenty.
Second.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor for the administrative change?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item for administrative change passes.
And the one last item or two that I would bring up, and this would need a vote as well. Uh, the commission recently approved the filing deadline meeting date schedule. However, we had now observed, uh, in twenty twenty-two, the Juneteenth holiday, which falls on Monday, June twentieth. I need the commission's approval to shift that deadline to then Tuesday, June twenty-first.
Removed.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
And the final announcement is, uh, unless there is an unforeseen circum, circumstance, our next meeting via Zoom will be our last scheduled meeting via Zoom. We will be back in person in the Auditorium of Government Plaza on November fourth.
Great, thank you.
That's all I have.
Can I just ask, can I ask a quick question before we adjourn? Um, the applicant that hadn't seen the staff report, I, I, I'm just curious, does that automatically, or do they have to ask for that? How, how does that work?
We email it to them when we email y'all the reports.
I, I thought so, so, okay, I just, I, I was a little concerned about that she had to look at a former one. So you remember when she was looking at the?
Oh, Ms. Alexander, yes, yes.
No.
Uh, when we send the reports to the commission, we send them to the applicants as well.
So they, they are armed with them prior to the meeting? Yeah, I'd never seen that before, but I, I was just a little, okay, that's all, thanks, appreciate it.
It's just us in here, right, Margaret?
Uh, we are live streaming.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Okay. I think that's good public information.
Absolutely.
It, it, it is a little bothersome to staff because we do send that.
I know, and that's what I really, I understand that, and that's why I thought, because that was not rep, anyway, okay, very good, thank you.
This concludes the meeting.
Good job, Joe.